It was nice. I got pretty sick last week, so that was unfortunate because I had to kind of weather that to close out the week and then weather it. Well, the trip began up there, but I felt a lot better now because it was beautiful up there.
What did you go for?
Uh, Cornell, Michigan.
Oh, might help if I turn the sound on.
A seven-hour drive from here. Um, it's like right when you cross Basseter, just like hard left, hug the water down. It's about a couple hours west.
It's beautiful.
So gorgeous.
Like Concord Harbor and all that.
Oh, it's magical. Magical. Truly magical, though.
Anything.
I would say hard.
Yeah.
Love it.
I've never heard of you.
Yeah, it's great before.
Yeah, we already said, we're going to go there.
That's awesome.
Go off and check it out.
Yeah.
In the, uh, Mackinac Island.
Oh, yeah?
Just in.
We're gonna stop there.
It's really beautiful. Nice looking way. It's hard to believe that's the same state. You know, I think people don't really appreciate that.
Chrome goes home.
Mackinac Island, we went, uh...
We have to stop.
Yeah.
We're on that trail.
Four-star.
Well, I won't be here without you.
Why?
Like, oh, my hat's off. Yards, study yards. I mean, it's one house with this huge chariot.
I'll follow you all.
And they have, um, so the horses are like, they're just...
Oh, yeah.
And I'm like, oh, they're really cute.
Seriously.
It's so...
So much expansive. Oh. Uh, can we get our mic screen? We're one minute from the top of the hour.
Yeah, let's go.
Are we looking at AV?
And I got your guys' stickers ordered today, so...
Cool. I see Mike said that today.
Yep. We got an account and they gave us 15% off. So, all of that now.
Next week, that's our, our plan next week. We're gonna get out on the boat and fix the lights.
Yep, those came in. He ca- came and got them. He said they're...
Not a councilman anywhere I have, right?
Unless we have to do the pledge, then you gotta take it home.
Definitely. You know that. How about you, young man? How are you doing?
Another day, another nickel.
I didn't stop.
Finally got my grass cut today. That's all I cared about. I had a forest going on in the back and I know it was supposed to rain tomorrow. It rained all day yesterday and if I didn't get through it, I was never gonna get it done.
All right. The clock has struck the top of the hour. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to council, department heads, and members of public that are either here in person or tuning in virtually. I'd like to pass to Clerk Tomasic to please call roll.
Shu-Mei?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Mulner? Valentine? Walden?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Great. Uh, we don't need a motion to excuse any absent members since this is a study session, which is a great time to remind you that there is no motion today. So this, I'll give more framing to the discussion, but with that, we would love to go ahead and invite any members of public for a public comment. If you have any comment for council, please approach the podium and make sure that light is green and state your name and address.
You guys don't wanna listen to me.
Come on.
All right. We're not seeing any public comment here in chambers, which will then bring us to the core of today's study session. Uh, council, uh, we had scheduled a study session aligned with our budget planning for a full year of 2025, 2026. Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to frame. Again, uh, with the study session, this is for discussion purposes amongst council and department heads only, so there will be no action taken this evening. Uh, as you look forward in front of you, the goal is to review what's been assembled in your packets, and we'll talk through that, have a discussion about your input as voting members of council and department heads. And then we're gonna basically take a next step. On May 12th at 5:30 PM, prior to our council meeting, we'll have a public hearing. And that public hearing allows members of public to weigh in, uh, in addition to obviously revisiting the content that we have for our proposed budget. Um, so with that being said, let's go ahead and dive in. Uh, council in, in front of you and in your packets, uh, I'd like to call your attention first to, uh, the presentation for our proposed budget. Uh, obviously, you'll see also in your packet the budget, uh, with the specific breakdown that's been assembled by Finance Director McEwen. But let's start with the presentation. I won't go word for word since you've had this in your packet and have had a chance to review, uh, both, uh, prior to this meeting as well as potentially with Finance Director McEwen. Uh, but really what I want to frame for you is our goal with the presentation is to lay the strategic framework for the entire process of establishing our full-year budget. You'll see that that presentation will hit on a variety of different areas. If you open to the first set of slides, you're gonna see it's gonna give you a highlight on the budget process. Uh, so, uh, without going into rigorous detail on the slide, we laid out a calendar that was approved by council. Uh, our Finance Director McEwen has driven said calendar according to the different milestones from the internal reviews with the Finance Director and department heads, uh, to the, uh, budget review with myself and the Finance Director, to, uh, proposing the budget, uh, to having study sessions, working sessions such as today, to having a public hearing, which I described on May 12th, and then to adopting the budget and millages, which would be targeted for our second council meeting in May, which is May 26th.
May 28th.
Sorry, May 28th due to the holiday. Uh, the next slide that you'll see, uh, is gonna go over some of the objectives and themes. Really kind of three pillars we've laid out here. One is transparency. Uh, we want our bu- our budget to be very transparent, uh, and it's a policy statement and a management tool for us as council, uh, to monitor the funds, how we spend them, what we bring in, uh, and how that relates to strategic pillars for our, our administration. The second, uh, pillar here I think is really important is how we look at this budget. I think there's a couple of things I want to highlight. One is, we want to be prospective. I think one of the big themes of this administration has been taking a look at the long term and driving sustainability for this community, uh, and able to deliver for our residents. And with that being said, we've, we've looked a lot at our professional services, building, planning, legal, engineering, solid waste. Uh, we've tried to accept and address the challenges facing our community, from water to infrastructure, uh, to most recently discussions around insurance. Uh, and we want to make sure we're adopting and integrating technology into our operation, obviously for the efficiency and effectiveness for our residents, the city personnel that make this operation possible. Uh, and we want to do all of this with a service-oriented mindset, uh, making sure that our residents have a great experience as they interface with Gibraltar, or make sure that we're providing and delivering for our residents through infrastructure, uh, saving costs where possible, again, to set us up for the long term, and maintaining a critical eye on every dollar we spend, including through our professional service channels. If you all, open up to the next page, uh, in the presentation, uh, we want to make sure we're collaborating across our personnel and our neighboring communities, and leveraging state and federal elected official interface where possible. So you'll see many examples of that from us, uh, working with our neighbors, for example, in Rockwood, and absorbing the dispatch operation, uh, to making sure we're putting in budget requests, such as the funding we got for our West Jefferson Water Main and the additional projects we've asked for funding in this cycle. So we want to constantly be collaborating both internally and externally, and we want to make sure that we're doing our part as our administration to maintain the character of Gibraltar and bring equality of life to our residents and those that visit our community. And obviously, I won't be redundant in stating that will relate to our infrastructure, uh, that will relate to making sure we have the right personnel in our operation, and that we're very sustainably minded in regards to the longer-term horizon in front of us. Things like our five-year budget projection focus, our Infrastructure Advisory Committee to allocate dollars to get the, you know, most bang for our buck. And the next slide, you're gonna start getting to some graphical analyses, and there'll be a tabular format on the right. Uh, what I want to flag to you first is you'll see the revenue breakdown. Uh, you'll see that as a pie chart on the left, and then you'll see the absolute numerics on the right in tabular format. Uh, each one of them is labeled with percentages. You can understand those percentiles related to the overall pie. If you go to the next slide, it gives a nice synopsis of the, uh, revenue sources, uh, property taxes. Uh, exciting news that we have a proposed millage reduction. This will be the second budget cycle in a row with our administration that we have a millage reduction proposed, taxable value growth at 4.8%. Uh, you'll see water and sewage rates are detailed as well in this presentation. Uh, no change. We did, uh, have a, uh, readout, uh, on our SHUVA lookback. If you recall, in our last SHUVA lookback, it was, uh, about $210,000 we got back. Uh, this year, we're, uh, looking at a rebate of about $176,000. So incredibly awesome that we have this money coming back into the city of Gibraltar based on the lookback reports through SHUVA, which relates to obviously efficiency achieved in the infrastructure, specifically the sewer lining. You'll see that property taxes and water sewer rates are about 60% of the overall budget, and that, that's obviously broken down numerically in the pages that you've seen and will see in the latter part of the deck. And then we'll talk about the fund balance, uh, specifically, or fund balances in different areas of the budget, uh, and the, I would say, high-level summary of them in a following slide. If you look at the next slide, this is gonna break down our millage history. Uh, what I'd like to call your attention to is, uh, obviously, we worked together as administration in our last budget cycle. Uh, we're able to deliver on a millage reduction. You'll see that as you look at the current cycle, uh, we are proposing a millage reduction, and it shows the history and the calendar year from 2020 to 2025, and the change you'll see there denoted in red. Uh, next slide, just for visual reference and a reminder, we've done a lot of work, obviously, with our water, uh, and making sure that we are taking a critical look at leak detection, looking at how we update, uh, dated infrastructure. Uh, hats off to Chelsea and everybody in the office who obviously drives that day-to-day for our community. This is just giving you a nice overview of our water and sewer charges. Uh, obviously, a very important point of reference as you look at the broader budget presentation that's been assembled. The next slide that you'll see here, last thing on the water is to, I know the community had historically asked about, you know, how does my bill get broken down? How do I know what, you know, my bill contains? Uh, so if you recall, as an administration, we did a deep dive on that. We had a public presentation, shared that information with the community, just so everybody had a better appreciation for where your dollars go when it comes to your water bill that shows up. Uh, next slide is gonna be, uh, a summary, uh, an exciting summary for that matter, on major operating funds. So think about this like our fiscal health summary. Uh, I'll go each one. Our general fund, we're in a good equity position, but we have to be mindful of future challenges with budgets, especially given current market considerations. Number two, major street fund, operating budget balance. We have a modest fund equity that we hope to put towards road and bridge projects. Local street fund, operating budget balance, and we have a modest fund equity for street and bridge projects. DDA fund, we're in extremely good position. Need to just continue to focus on spending down that bond, which we've, uh, given updates on in our most recent council meeting. Capital improvements, voted millage, operating budget balanced. Water sewer fund, good fund equity, and that SHUVA lookback maintains our existing rate, so we don't have to deliver any increase, uh, a bill to our community, uh, when it comes to that, and the, the dollar amount that we just got in our lookback. Uh, pension funds, uh, very solid, fully funded with conservative assumptions. And then our retiree healthcare, not funded. It's pretty much a pay-as-you-go system. Uh, I won't go into a lot of detail, uh, on the next slide, other than it's a nice visual comparison, and, uh, Amy, our Finance Director, can talk through more of the details here as we progress this discussion. But this is showing you in blue our fund balance for these respective pillar areas, and then in orange our expenditures. So it gives you a nice reference point on, uh, you know, how those two, uh, pillars relate to one another. And again, we can go into more detail. Uh, next, uh, slide is gonna show you general fund and the sources of the fund. Uh, so if you go back to, we know we have a good equity position in our general fund. Uh, this kind of breaks down for you, on the left, the pie chart, on the right, the tabular format of absolute dollar amounts and percentiles, and how you make up that overall general fund pie. Uh, general fund expenditures. So now that we've talked about where the sources are, the next slide tells you where the, the, uh, expenditures lie. And you'll see again, left side will be the pie chart with the percentiles, and the absolute numbers reflected on the right. So when you look at, uh, kind of how we, how we, I would say, should focus some of the North Star areas we need to progress, uh, you'll see on the next slide just a few bullet points. One is, we gotta continue to work on spending, uh, the bond money for prioritized projects. You know, we've got a lot of discussions on that. Much of that spending is in-flight. We talked about our last council meeting. We gotta continue to deliver on that. Um, and, and obviously, in context, allocating our DDA funds, which is an extremely, uh, solid position, uh, to our projects where applicable in the DDA. Uh, third, uh, just a note is solid waste is on its own fund, and we've allocated dollars, you'll see, $25,000 for chipping and administrative work. Again, Finance Director McEwen and team can speak more on the details. And then I put this last bullet here because I think it's really important, which is, as we're driving a more objective understanding of our water, our sewage, our road, uh, improvement plans, uh, we need to make sure, obviously, we have a strategy to do that that's tied within our financial means, and are allocating the dollars proactively to accomplish that. Last slide is gonna really just focus on some of the upcoming projects that are in-flight. Uh, we have additional funding for sanitary sewer lining. Uh, council, you'll, you'll, uh, have an update, but sewer lining work continues, uh, and, uh, want to make sure that we were flagging that for you. Uh, DDA project funding, you'll see the, the $620,000. Uh, when you look at the prioritized projects, I know Councilman Cox sits on our planning DDA, but we've talked a lot about our, our prioritization for where we're gonna spend those dollars, and obviously, many of those projects have either completed or are in planned phase for either, uh, upcoming completion, um, or, or mid- or midterm completion. Uh, the next one is gonna be really around the federal funding for Gibraltar Road Bridge replacement. So this is on our funding request we put in. We put in flood control, uh, and storm water maintenance, uh, request, but we also did our middle Gibraltar Bridge, uh, request. So you'll see that highlighted there. You'll see the continued delivery of activities aligned with our lead and copper grant. Uh, obviously, we've given several updates, uh, from the, uh, from the work that's being done in the lead and copper lane. And then lastly, that West Jefferson Water Main, those are the, uh, million dollars that we had, uh, been granted, uh, that goes towards that West Jefferson Water Main project. And again, I know our Infrastructure Advisory Committee has been hard at work in advancing that. So just want to kind of frame to you the strategic framework of our budget through the presentation. Um, well, I'll stop there. If there's any questions, comments, areas of feedback, and then while you're thinking, maybe Finance Director McEwen, anything you'd like to add to what I've shared thus far?
I got nothing to add on any of that.
Council, any reactions? Things you feel might be missing or warrant a double-click when it comes to the presentation? All right. Well, as you're think- yeah, please. Yeah.
The miscellaneous revenue that's shown is $483,000. What does that con- what does miscellaneous mean?
Okay, it depends on where are you at?
This was in the revenue side of our...
Oh.
So the dollar value is $483,000?
$483.
For overview?
Um, that's different miscellaneous stuff that didn't fall under the other kind of prior headings. Um, some of that would be our cable fund. Some of that would just be, um, I did, I did list interest. Some of it would be like just the miscellaneous stuff that we get from, let's see, I don't have recreation listed, so it would be recreation. It would be miscellaneous payments that come in that we really don't have anywhere to put it at. It's not water and sewer.
I'm just curious because it's a fairly good dollar.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great question.
Yeah, this is, I did this before I left, so I'm a little blank on this. Um...
Perhaps it's a good, uh, if you don't have it, uh, on hand, uh, maybe it's a good follow-up for council, just to maybe show you some of the line items that would fall underneath that as, as, uh, tangible examples.
Yeah, that would be perfect because then I can pull it up for the actual, for the presentation on Monday, so that I have a good answer for you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Want anything else to inquire about?
I, I don't have your, uh, that presentation that you have there, the, um, the charts and all that. I've just got the, uh, the budget spreadsheet that, uh, Amy provided. So are you asking, do we have questions on this, uh, spr- uh...
That was the packet that, uh, Katie had assembled and sent to council for tonight. Uh, and there, yeah, just generally speaking, as a starting point, is there any questions on that before we get to the detailed lineup and breakdown that Finance Director McEwen had assembled for us?
Are we, are we planning on pulling from our land fund for this, uh, budget?
Nope, we're paying back our land fund in this budget. We still have to pay it back as per previous council, um, motions that occurred.
Okay. Um, I thought I, I seen under revenues on the, on the, uh, spreadsheet, $63,000 from land fund, under revenues, or from fund balance, not land fund.
Yeah, fund balance is actually in the general fund. So we are pulling $63,000 from fund balance. A lot of that is going to pay back the land fund for previous borrowing. So we weren't able to create a balanced budget without pulling from that.
Okay, so we are pulling the $63,000. We're pulling from the general fund.
Fund balance.
Balance.
Yes.
In order to create a balanced budget.
Yes.
So we're reducing our fund balance by $63,000 on this budget?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
And Finance Director McEwen, you had, I think, touched on that in a previous council meeting. Can you provide color on kind of what the, what the rationale was for that, where those dollars were pulled from?
For the, um...
What were the biggest contributing factors, I guess I would say?
For the land fund borrowing, that would be the park, or I don't know if I should call it a park or not. The little piece of land that was by the Dairy Queen, um, the ambulance and the stretchers. Those were all motion to borrow from land fund and to pay land fund back. Uh, this is the last payment back for the, um, park purchase, the land from Dairy Queen. So this is the last payment back is on this budget for that one. So that one will be falling off, and then I think we have one more year on stretchers, and then we have a few more years on the ambulance. So...
Fantastic. Thank you. Counsel, as this was designed to be a study session for your input, any other, uh, comments or areas that we want to discuss, since we have all parties here, including department heads and Finance Director McEwen?
You want me to start talking?
Yeah, please.
All right, so for the general funds, um, we do have a slight increase with the taxes. I did try to do, um, basically, I tried to forecast based on what we've brought in previous years and tried to go based on that together, the data for the upcoming year. Um, I was also able to pull reports on items such as state shared revenue, um, the Rockwood dispatch. We can guess that pretty well. And different items that the state has published, what we're going to get. I was able to get those, and that's pretty much what's going to come in. Um, they usually also guesstimate, but it's roundabout exactly what we're going to get in. Um, I've got the interest trending. I'm hoping that it continues to trend high, and I'm also going to be looking into, um, changing our investment portfolio a little bit more to think in the long term for that. I do also have some transfers from different funds, including solid waste. Um, we do do chipping around town, and the girls do answer quite a few calls about garbage. I, I have to say, on garbage day, that phone rings a lot. So there is a lot of administrative work that ends up going towards solid waste. Um, for the different departments, I did talk to the different department heads and try to arrange a budget based on the request and what we were expecting upcoming. Um, we are expecting to have quite a few computers that we're going to have to buy because a lot of our computers are not Windows 11 compliant, and they need to be. Um, we're also hoping, we're planning to get another police car. Um, and then there's some new radios needed and police. And then I did, I based the building inspector fees based on what we're gonna have coming in for buildings, so that can obviously change. It's just kind of a trending basis because we pay them out 95% of what we get in. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions on the general fund budget, if there's any comments. I know it's a lot of color. There's colors everywhere.
I really appreciate the color coding. Increase, decrease, and same is quite clear. So thank you.
And then we go into other funds, which is land fund, which we're still, we're paying back the land fund. That's what that miscellaneous revenue is. Um, I'm hoping that we can continue to do our sidewalk repair projects, which usually what we do is we go in and we mark the sidewalks that are trip hazards. We let the residents know, um, it would be built to the resident, or they can take care of it themselves. Um, it's something that we did, I think, two years ago, and we really need to make sure that we're keeping up on that, um, just because it's kind of a safety issue not to do that. Um, then the next one is motor vehicle major. Um, we do have a pretty sizable fund balance in that account. That's because I'm hoping to see a bridge project upcoming, um, for major roads. We are also still transferring a decent amount, what we are allowed to transfer from major to local, to help, um, fund the necessary improvements that we need for our local roads, as well as a bridge replacement that we have upcoming in there. Um, for local roads, I did set aside, um, a sizable amount for payment, repair, and replacement. I'm hoping that we can kick some of that out of the way. It's $175,000. I don't know how much that's going to cover, but I'm hoping that we can get some work done with that. And I also have a sizable fund balance to help work on bridge projects in local roads. Do I have any questions so far? Okay.
I'm gonna have a whole bunch for you, Amy.
All right. I feel like I should stop so that you can ask. All right, I feel like I should stop so that you can ask them and I don't get lost.
I ran out.
For solid waste, not much going on there. I based on the waste hauling, rubbish collection, and all of that, that's increasing, as well as as the transfer going into our general fund for DDA. I'm showing the amount that we have in our bond, in our bond fund. I'm hoping to see that spent, actually, I have to see that spent down by the end of this, that this fiscal year. So we have to spend that. Please spend that. Then the next one is a tax collection account, which that's basically what comes in, goes out. Our next one is forfeiture, which we haven't really seen any huge things happening with that in a bit. And that's what we, we use the forfeiture account to help buy police equipment. It can only be used for police equipment. Then we have the cable account, which is our broadcasting. Everybody has been seeing the cable franchise fees and the amounts of revenue being brought in going down. It's kind of a sign of the times where everybody is switching to streaming and everything else, so there's not as many cable franchising fees. The next two accounts are our bonds, and it's our road bond and our building bond, which I was able to lower the mileage for that, and I'm hoping to have those. We do get a stabilization share fund for that as well, so I am hoping to pull a little bit, we have a little bit of a fund balance in both of those accounts, and I want to get that gone. The next is the water mileage, which we've been saving up on that, and that has been mainly for this big, the big water main line. And I'm hoping to have some other projects coming down the road. And then the water account, I based it off of our water usage in the past. Basically, I take a rolling average based on our water rates and everything else. And then I kind of just guesstimate a small amount that is going to come back from SHUVA, and I did guess a very low amount on that one. But we also should be looking at possibly replacing some meters in the upcoming years in upcoming budgets. And then we have our employee pension funds, which always varies based on what the stock market is going to do. And then I know Rob's got a lot of questions for me.
Tell me when.
Go ahead. Just tell me what you're looking at, so I look at the same page.
I'm going to bounce all over the place. So let's start with DDA.
Okay.
I see you have, under expenditures, you have some proportion, or a portion of salaries for multiple employees.
Yes.
Is that something that we do every year? We pull from the DDA fund to pay administrative salaries?
Yes. Yes, that's to help balance the budget for the general fund, and we have pulled it in the past, yes.
I think, I think we should maybe have Anthony do a little bit of research on how we can use DDA funds to make sure that we're, we're within appropriate usage of those funds.
Yep.
That's something I'd like to have on the agenda for one of the next meetings, because I, I know I brought to yourself and Vince a few months, well, six months, a year ago, the set of rules from the state of Michigan on DDA, and I know we haven't done anything with it yet, so I think we just ought to make sure that we're in compliance and make sure that we're not utilizing funds for something that we really shouldn't be utilizing them for.
Yeah, let's, Amy, we can work together and make sure Anthony gets a look at that and verifies status.
Yep.
On the computers, you had a $60,000 line item under general administration for long, long-term computer swap outs?
That is for our IT department.
We have an IT department?
Well, not really. We have outside services for IT, but yeah.
And so we buy them their computers, or?
No, that is essentially how much it costs for us to have IT in.
Okay, so that's not a, a...
No, that's not a capital expenditure.
That is just what we pay them?
Yep.
Service fee.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Where did I see this? For the cell tower lease, we might want to be conservative for the revenue we associate with that?
I think we're okay for this year, but we're probably going to want to be conservative for the following year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's spot on, just because that lease is still through this budget cycle, so we can guarantee funds, and then obviously, as you and I stay close to that discussion, we'll understand better for the following.
Got it, okay.
So I'm good this time, but not next time.
Understood. The Wayne County Block Grant is, I seen we, we had $137,456 last year, and we're, we're budgeting $20,000. Is that just something that, there was a specific grant that we received?
Yes, that was for the massive van that we got for seniors.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, and that comes around, I think, every three to four years, where they let us push for a bigger amount of money for something that can be used for seniors.
Got it. And I like how you mentioned that you're going to look at the investment funds and diversify a little bit to more long-term thinking. I think that's probably appropriate, given our economic conditions. That was one of the questions I was going to ask, but you answered it already. Thank you.
That was one of the things we talked about in my conference.
What is, what is deferred comp? And, because I see it in different, I see it under the mayor-president supervisor line item, I see it under the clerk line item, I see it under the police public safety line item.
So that's our, I think it's called a 457, if I'm not mistaken. That's what the city contributes to it, so the city does a matching based on whatever we contribute. So you know how they do a 5% match for retire, it's like a retirement 401K.
Okay. And so I guess who is that available to?
It's available to all of the full-time employees, as well as the salary employees. It's available to Austin as well.
Why is there a deferred comp and a MERS deferred comp?
Because they're going to two different companies. We have three different companies that we do. We have MERS, Nationwide, and Alaris. We also have a deferred comp for health insurance because future employees, we have a cutoff. We have some that still have employee healthcare after they retire, but we do have a cutoff, and a lot of future employees will not get employee healthcare after retirement, so we do have a healthcare savings for them.
That's the HRA?
Yes.
And that's what that $58,000 reimbursement is?
Oh, no, that's not what the HRA is, I'm sorry. The HRA is used to balance out our healthcare so that we are actually matching what was in the contracts.
Got it, okay. That's the 20%, or whatever percentage?
Well, when they did their contract, and Bruce can correct me if I'm wrong here, when they had comp trust, they had, I want to say, no deductible or anything like that. And so we have to honor that with the insurance. So basically, the insurance that we have now has a deductible, and that pays it down as it's happening.
Got it.
It's very confusing.
I get it.
So...
No, it makes sense. The insurance bonds line item for general government, I presume, is our MML policy, or is it, is it for our GL?
Yep, that is for our MML policy, as well as our workman's comp and a few other miscellaneous insurances that we cover, like we get one for the firefighters.
Auto as well?
Yes, our auto is through MML.
So GL, workers, comp, and auto.
Yep.
The amount that we have for the rescue equipment getting paid back to the land fund, that's, that's something that we, we're budgeting under expenditure here?
That is budgeted under 101-303-729, $41,273.
And that's for the stretchers and that?
Ambulance, yes.
Okay. I'm still going to have a few more, Garrett, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. This is what we're here for.
Cool. Sorry.
We borrowed off the paint back line fund.
Yes. Yep, I have Excel spreadsheets to show like the payments and stuff, if you guys wanted to see like what's out in land fund and everything. It got too confusing for me, so I created a special spreadsheet for it.
I'm having a hard time finding the, where I've seen the revenue associated with the building department.
Oh, that's all pink and on your first page. Rental inspections, building permits, electrical permits, plumbing permits, heating, and it's all pink.
Got it. So we're projecting somewhere in the 140, 150 range there, and expenditure is at the 135?
Yep. Have my mask on, please let me know.
No, 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 none at all. For the street lighting under DPW, is that something that is the cost of utility, or is that the cost of?
It's cost of utilities for us to have our streetlights turned on, yes.
Got it. And those, I know, costs are rising quickly.
Yes. I don't know if there's anything we can say, it's not rising quickly.
Yeah.
At least they changed the LED.
Mm-hmm.
The old sodium's ate our lunch.
With respect to parks and rec, I know we have some amount towards activities budgeted here, and then there is some amount from activities that would probably be contributed by DDA throughout the year on specific asks, unless there is a particular budget that anybody knows of from DDA that, that directs funding to, to the recreation department.
I think Austin and I met on this, and we found that Christmas and 4th of July are through DDA, but Easter and Fall Fest is through general fund.
Okay, so it was one, one of the things that I, I know I, I went and spoke with Austin a couple of weeks ago, and when we, when we brought Austin in as the new rec director, we talked about some of the different programs that we wanted to reestablish and, and try to get going. We had that Sunday upstairs where we talked with people that were interested in having some feedback, and people wrote with markers on the dry erase board, had some really good ideas, and I think that it's important that we give, give him the tools to be able to carry out what we expect of him. And would be pretty, I guess, I don't know if this is the part of the practice that we talk about, or if we put it on a future agenda item for a, for a actual council meeting, but to, to give some directive, a council directive, to our recreation director as to which programs that we want him to reestablish or establish. And, and make sure that we prepare a budget for what it costs to establish that program, a realistic budget, because if, if we're asking him to start up a baseball league or a golf thing, or, or some, some other types of programs, but, you know, we don't have a funding mechanism for it, we're, we're just going to be disappointed. And so I think it's something that, I don't know the appropriate venue for talking about it, and maybe here's a general conversation, and maybe we put it on a future meeting agenda so that we can actually give a directive. Because I don't, right now, I don't think, I don't think Austin has a directive for what programs to get going, and, and I don't know if we want to have that as a, as a directive from council, or if, or if he's, you know, got his marching orders on his own and, and we're, we're, you know, standing back. But I think it's something we ought to discuss so that we're, we're all happy with the, you know, the product that we're asking for and receiving.
That's a great point. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think that would be helpful, because then him and I can meet, and this is kind of just a guideline, we can adjust as needed. But I think that would be good, because then him and I can meet and see what funds are needed and get ideas for that, if you guys were to give an directive as to what you were looking for.
I think that's a great idea. I think we should definitely put that on a future agenda, maybe some offline preparation, Austin and select councilman.
I had a couple of things after our conversation. I have it back in my office, kind of like remembers on what I would need to get a couple of different leagues going. I didn't bring them with me today, so I'm not going to tell you about that, but I looked into it.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great starting point to take what you've assembled, and then Councilman Molnar and Finance Director McKeown, party can sit down together offline, and then we can bring it in front of council for discussion, and to your point, like make sure you got the resources to execute on the projects based on council direction.
Okay.
I like that, yeah. Let's make that an action. I think whenever we're ready, whenever that offline meeting can happen, then we can bring it back to council in the next council meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can't get together next week, or, or even before our, do we want to try and do it before our budget?
It would be savvy if you could get it done, yeah, because we have the public hearing on the 12th. We got to adopt a budget target for the 26th. If we can prioritize this, then we could address it accordingly in the numbers.
Yep, and then we got to adopt the mileage rates at the next meeting, but we have to adopt the budget at the final meeting in May.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, then, then maybe, what, what days are, are best for you, Austin?
I can do it this week or next week. Any weekday.
Okay. All right.
I like that. Great call.
That's really the, the gist of my questions that I have now, but I would like to set a time to, to meet offline during the course of this week, too, to ask some of my minutia questions that I don't want to waste everybody's energy with here.
Okay, that's fine.
Cool.
Just let me know.
Yeah, very organized and very easy to read, and it makes this, it makes it look like it's super simple for us up here, but there is, there's a, a lot going on, and you've organized it very well.
Yeah, it's not super simple, but I try to make it easy to read. It's very colorful, and I make sure that I have all the, the requirements, such as the fund balances. You're supposed to have the imbalance from the previous year, as well as the original, current, and amended, something else I learned at my conference. So I have all the proper columns going on here.
And, and I imagine that our, in terms of the expenditures, the specific expenditures under any line item, those are to be determined via directives up, from up here. So those are conversations that we can get into.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to be determined, or some of it's actually just regular expenditures that regularly come out or that we know of, like for my department or for Bruce's and Katie's, we all kind of look at what we've done in the past, how much it's cost us to have ink cartridges, you know, silly different items that you don't necessarily think of, but it goes into the budget.
Right, perfect.
Well, I think we have a great discussion. I think we have a few actions. So one, Amy, we can make sure, for example, per Councilman Cox's question...
Yep.
Well, I think we have a great discussion. I think we have a few actions, so one, Amy, we can make sure, for example, per Councilman Cox's question, we can get some of that breakdown online item-based characterization there.
Yep, I will have that ready for you guys by the next meeting. I apologize, I forgot what I put into it.
Oh, you're good, it'll help give context for everybody.
Yeah.
Number two, I'll make sure, Amy, maybe you can help assemble what the city attorney could take a look at for DDA related to compensation. Third, Councilman Molnar and Amy and Austin can sit down and talk about strategy relative to funding, and come back to council hopefully through this cycle before this locks and loads. Not that we can't amend over our time as we do.
Yep.
But it would be ideal to get in front of that.
We do four amendments a year, the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and we'll have a fourth quarter one at the end of June for the current budget cycle.
Awesome. But, department heads, thanks for managing your budget effectively. And Amy, as Councilman Molnar said, thank you so much for putting together such a robust and easy to understand set of information for us today. Counsel, any other comments or questions, or things we want to take as actions for the next steps?
And you guys can always set up meetings with me throughout the week. I swear, I'm nice, you don't bite.
Awesome. Well, if there's no other discussion items, I'd love to turn it over to public comment. Public comment, is there any members of public that wish to address council this evening according to our discussion we had? Are there any broader topics you'd like to raise? All right, well, since there's no motions, we are at the point of adjournment, so if there's no final comments, then I hope everybody has a great evening. Thanks for spending some afternoon time together. And Amy, once again, thank you so much.
No problem.
Talk to you soon.